Look for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 22nd County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. Robert has a listening to his eyes vices, but I don't think anybody in here needs them. With that being said, we'll move on.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the agenda. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 15th, 2014.
Move the minutes.
Second.
A motion is second on the minutes. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $587,974.71.
Pay the bills. Second the bills.
Motion is second. Any comments? No comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Register of Deeds official statement of fees collected in June 2014 has been received, and that is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move approval of routine action.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no application for abatement. The next item is notice and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider application for retail on and off sale malt beverage license from Wild Prairie Winery Incorporated, Jeffrey and Victoria Wild, for Chases Track One, a portion of the southeast quarter, southwest quarter, Section 16, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, located at 48052, 259th Street in Brandon.
Move for approval.
A motion.
Publish that notice.
A motion is second to authorize publication of notice of hearing. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item eight is planning and zoning notices, and there are none today. Item nine is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 81326 in the amount of $6,710.77. This is a little bit different. The auditor's office has received an application from the applicant. The applicant does not have a county aid lien listed in her name. So even though it's coming to me as the lien commissioner, there is no lien. However, there is some property that's been affected. Her name is currently on a mobile home located here in Minniac County. And it is also located with the name of her daughter. Her daughter actually is the one that incurred the lien. She's currently housed in the women's prison in Pier. And she's the one that incurred the aid lien in the amount of $6,710.77. Of course, the lien is primarily for public defender services and some poor relief and for hospitalization services that were filed back in May of 2014. The lien was started back in March of 2013, and the last recorded activity was June of this last year. Of course, the daughter has made a total of $467.66 paid towards the lien. The applicant is seeking to qualify for the purchase of a home. In order to do so, she has to show that she does not own any other residence. Now, the applicant is actually initiating the process to remove her name from the title of the mobile home. As part of this process, she's asking that the commission not require any payment on the lien from her daughter as part of removing her name only from the title. So the lien would remain in full effect against the mobile home and her daughter, Jennifer M., I'll just say the current recipient of the poor relief funds or and the public defender funds. Once again, we have a situation where there is no real financial information coming in here, other than the fact that the mother currently would like to have any sort of interest she has in this mobile home removed from her so she could move on and get housing. And currently, because of the situation related with the mobile home, this was impeding her ability to move forward. I do have a proposed resolution. Because we aren't releasing the lien, I do have a proposed resolution that's been prepared. Would anybody want me to read it before we make a motion?
Please.
All right. Whereas a county aid lien in the amount of $6,710.77 purports to exist in favor of Minniac County against DPNO 81326 as lienee, and whereas the applicant has filed a request to have their name released from the title on the 1977 Greer mobile home that is attached to DPNO number 81326 with no payment from the applicant, and that the lien remained in force against the lienee and the mobile home, now therefore be it resolved that after due consideration of the circumstances, the board of the county commissioners finds it advisable and proper to authorize the chairman of the county board and the county auditor to execute the following. Authorize the release of the applicant's name on the title of the 1977 Greer mobile home with no payment on the lien from the applicant or lienee, leaving the lien in force against the mobile home and the lienee dated Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 22nd of July 2014. That's the proposal. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the resolution. Are there any other comments?
What the what she's trying to she wants her name off because she wants to get what into Habitat Housing or?
Yeah, I don't know if it was Habitat Housing. Yeah, she's trying to qualify. And she has to have all interest and current housing extinguished. And, you know, this is actually a mobile home owned by her daughter. But because she has a vestige of ownership, this could impede her ability to move forward.
Well, it's cold. But.
Is the applicant here? No, I don't see anything. I have a motion and a second to accept the resolution. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
What's the value of the mobile home? Do we know?
1977 mobile home.
For my old equalization days, I'm going to say the value of that 1977 Greer single wide mobile home is probably less than $2,500.
And we're putting a lien on it for 6,000 something?
Again, you will not find a specific piece of paper that says, "We are putting this lien against this particular piece of property or this particular asset." It's just a matter and function of state law that it automatically would accrue. I mean, I'll be honest with you. If this lady had not come to us to try to do this action, and she had tried to change the title on the mobile home, since there was quote, "No title work" or "Title search done by a, you know, a title guarantee company," quite frankly, I think it would have probably gone through, and she would have been able to do it without even notifying us in that end. But she just simply did it to keep her bases covered. It would be much like our liens could attach technically to a car title. And they don't enforce themselves when people are trying to change a car title. So this is a very unique circumstances. It's one of the first times I've ever seen it come up in a in a mobile home when someone's trying to do this. Because quite frankly, like I said, without the title search process being done to get title insurance, it's likely it would not have been caught.
The lien is going to remain against the person who
Right.
used the services of the county, and I think that's the bottom line. The lady who's asking to be removed from the title of the building has nothing to do with these liens.
And it can also still rest against the mobile home.
Right. So I have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when you can speak about anything that is not on the agenda. And I thought auditor
Julie was going to say.
Christie was going to speak.
She has to leave.
Okay.
She is going to go.
Okay.
He can leave some documents for your review from Haco.
Okay. All right, then I guess we will move on.
Regular business. Item number 10 is the second reading and final consideration of proposed amendments to ordinance MC 16-90, the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minniac County, related to the following articles 3.04, 6.04, 7.04, 8.04, and 9.04, conditional uses, and articles 12.15, solar energy conversion systems, and article 26.02, definitions. Scott Anderson.
Good morning, Scott.
Scott Anderson, representing the county planning department. This morning is a text amendment that's coming before you, which would be amendment to the zoning ordinance. And as you recall, this is probably going to look a little familiar to you because at our June meeting with the city, we adopted basically the same text amendments. For the public, I'll give an overview and for the commission as well. But this is a request to deal with or put some information or some legislation in our zoning ordinance, which would allow for the implementation of solar energy conversion, which would basically be solar panels, which would generate electricity for commercial enterprises. And it, if you look at the screen before you, it would make amendments to sections 3.04, 6.04, 7.04, 8.04, 9.04. And those are the sections of the zoning ordinance that deal with the specific zoning ordinances. For example, 3.04 is the agricultural zoning district, 6.04 is recreational conservation, and the commercial districts, the light and the general industrial districts. Those would be the districts in which we would allow solar energy conversion systems to go into with a conditional use permit. The next portion of the ordinance amendment would amend Article 1205, which would be the meats, the meat and bones of the ordinance, which deals with how we will implement solar energy and the requirements for applying for a conditional use permit, submitting a site plan, a reclamation plan, how they're going to deal with roads, buffering, those are that all of that information is contained in Article 1205. And then finally, there'd be an amendment to Article 12 or 2602, which is the definitions in which we would create a definition for solar energy conversion systems. And just to give you an idea of what this would look like, this is generally a commercial solar energy system. And it's another way for the energy industry to create a viable energy source for our communities. And this is what they look like sort of close up. This is an actual energy, a solar energy system that is in operation in St. Cloud, Minnesota. So you can see that it's a viable option even for climates that are even further north than where we are. It just gives you an idea. They're they're put on a rail system, and then these the solar panels can adjust or rotate to face the sun. So they will maximize the the total amount of energy that is possible. They're very non-reflective. That often comes up. Is there reflection? Is there is is there any kind of a nuisance that would, you know, impede airplanes, that type of thing? And they are not they're certainly that's the exact opposite of what they want to do. Solar energy panels want to capture the sun, so they they are very careful about not reflecting it. So there's very little reflection. And added to other benefits, you know, there's grass, there's a potential for some wildlife habitat underneath these solar panels, which could benefit native flora and fauna. It can control runoff because you can see it's quite grassy underneath there. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. Today is a public hearing. And as I indicated, this is similar or exactly the wording that we adopted for the city in the city joint jurisdiction of our zoning ordinance. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Scott? This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents that would wish to speak? Are there any opponents that would wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm back to the commission.
I'd make a motion to approve these changes. I do have a question for Scott, I guess.
I have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second and a question for Scott, please.
Scott, have you had any questions from the public on this? I know that it's obviously been discussed in more than one forum.
No, I have it has been discussed in several forums. It's been discussed at a joint city-county planning commission meeting back in April or May, at May, and then it's been discussed at the county planning commission. So we've had several public hearings on this, and it's been before the joint city-county elected board back in June. Also, the concept of solar energy. So I have not had any inquiries from the public.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kelly?
I'm sorry, should I ask this earlier? Does this just apply to the large scale deals like we saw there or not? I mean, I noticed in their residential, it's okay on ag property and with CUP, I think, and some others. But if somebody's going to do it in their residence, it has nothing to do with what we're doing today?
It would not have anything to do with what we're doing today because this is specifically for the commercial generation of electricity. And this was also discussed at the planning commission level where there are solar powered roof roof vents there that operate, and that would not be impacted. You actually could even still put up solar panels for your own use, and that would not be regulated under this as it's for commercial generation of electricity.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott? Commissioner Bar.
Just in responding to Commissioner Kelly, I know that there is a tax break statewide for people putting in solar power in their own home. And a couple of years back, we had a person quite irate that he wasn't getting his tax break. And after some investigation, we found out he'd never gotten a building permit. So we never knew that he'd done it.
And one other thing I would offer up for Commissioner Kelly is that, you know, for a one for a one and a half megawatt plant, to give you an idea, it's about 300 acres. So the having that kind of needing that much land, it would be you wouldn't be commercially generating electricity in a residential neighborhood because you could fill your whole yard up with solar panels, and you still wouldn't be able to generate enough electricity really to sell back to the electric company. You may be able to completely supply your own property, but it would I don't think there'd be a lot of extra energy or electricity generated.
Isn't one and a half megawatt about what one one wind tower generates?
You know, I'm not exactly sure, but I don't I think it's I think that there is a I think it's more than that, but I wouldn't know exactly.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments, questions? A motion and a second. This is the second reading and final consideration of a proposed amendment. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 is consider resolutions to issue quitclaim deed for tax deed 2573 and tax deed 2571 to the city of Hartford and to authorize the chairman to sign purchase agreements. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Today, I'd like to talk about a property that's out in Hartford, South Dakota. Over the course of the last two years, the county has been dealing with the tax deed process on two contiguous properties out in the city of Hartford, South Dakota. Both of the parcels have dilapidated mobile homes on them right now. While the mobile home taxes were current until recently, the parcels were not. The county took tax deed on one parcel last year and the other one this year. The city of Hartford has been dealing with these properties for code, health, and nuisance issues for years. Hartford has indicated a desire to obtain the properties and has offered full payment of all taxes, special assessments, interest, and penalties in exchange for a quitclaim deed. The Hartford City Council has indicated support for the action should the commission decide to go this route. Under the authority of SDCL 6-5-1, the county may transfer title to this property to the city of Hartford under terms agreeable to both parties. The county appraisal board has convened to inspect the properties and give a recommendation as to the dispensation of the property. The recommendation to the appraisal board is to quitclaim deed the property's over to the city of Hartford in exchange for taxes, special assessments, interest, and penalties. The total of all those amounts is $11,268.88, and that was as of 7/2/14. Resolution for the action recommended by the appraisal board is available should the commission decide to go that route. I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Litz?
So according to this, we will recover all the taxes that are unpaid?
Taxes, interest, penalties, and special assessments.
So we come out as if they've been paid all along?
Yeah, well, that's that's that would be my opinion, yes.
Any other questions for the auditor?
I want to move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to issue the quitclaim deed. Are there any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign concurrence for amendment number two in the amount of $64,389.59 to the contract with Altech Engineers for the Minniac County Sign Replacement Project. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. As you're aware, Altech Engineers is contracted with the state of South Dakota right now to perform engineering services for the signing contract. And they've been working on that for some time now. They already have executed one amendment to this contract. Altech has negotiated a scope and fee for a second amendment now. And as you know, this contract is 100% paid by federal dollars. And the scope for the second amendment is basically to service the towns and townships. It's not for the county signing portion. The towns and townships have requested signage maps for each township and each each town. So they're going to be creating these these maps that are going to be more usable for the smaller governments that don't have intricate computer systems. So the total amount is $64,389.59, and it's just a concurrence with their contract. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them now.
Any questions for D.J.? Mr. Kelly?
I mean, I love getting the money, but why is the federal government paying 100% of this? I assume they're doing this all over the United States. So whatever the two or three thousand.
They are doing it over the United States in sort of a systematic way. It's not everybody at the same time. And I don't know how long ago they started this program, but South Dakota has been participating now for for several years. And so South Dakota is administering the federal program, and they're going county by county, and and they're administering the federal dollars.
Is this basically size and reflective quality or?
Yes. It's mostly reflective quality. There are some size changes and some some standard changes. We've talked about the text before on the street signs, but but for the most part, it's a reflectivity issue.
Any other questions for D.J.? Look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the concurrence amendment two. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion is passed unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is Minniac County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Bar.
I guess I have a bit of a question on liaison issue, which is the state is having their watershed conference on Thursday, I think it is. Should we have someone go to that, Ken?
Ken and I are going to actually be in Chamberlain, so we would be out.
Well, it's kind of a planning and zoning kind of issue, and that's why I bring it up under this.
I haven't seen I haven't seen the announcement or the time or place of it or where it's going to be or what's the topic.
I actually got it too, so I could forward it to you.
But but no, I'm not available to go. Commissioner Hybert and I will be in Chamberlain for the statewide JDAI implementation committee work, so. But if you feel the need to send someone, we can see if there's an arrangement.
Do you know what they're covering?
I don't.
Okay, we could check into it.
Yeah. Potentially, we could send someone from planning because I'm going to go to ag PhD things that day.
Commissioner Kelly?
The Criminal Justice Committee will be interviewing August 1st, is it, Gerald? August 1st, we're going to interview four top.
August 4th.
I'm sorry. Okay, the 4th. But anyway, the 4th, the 4th top of I think we received six, six proposals. We took the 4th top, and they did just got a numerical system. So we'll be interviewing them, and then probably won't be long after that. We'll I don't know, is it going to come to the commission after that? If I've got the documents, if anybody wants to look at them, I'd be glad to share them with you, so. Thanks a bit.
I did not get the documents, so.
No.
I know, everybody was passed out, but I think I relinquished mine to the office, so I do not have a set.
The proposals.
Yep.
Again, we are in the process of notifying folks and making arrangements, and we'd ask that you allow us to complete that process of the notification to the to the firms that were not selected to move forward, et cetera, before we get too far into it.
Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Commissioner Bar.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we could have Ken describe to us the incident we had this morning with our neighboring park. I tell you, I got in on the tail end of the of that story, and it's of some concern, obviously, to all of us.
Well, we did get I had a phone call this morning, very early this morning when I got here, from an employee who had observed what appeared to be someone on the ground in the park, or excuse me, in our parking lot adjacent to the to the park. And that I did go out, and and what I found at the time was appeared to be a pretty sad situation, and that a woman was sleeping under the park, or excuse me, sleeping in the parking lot, and that under a blanket. When I tried to ascertain if she was all right, she was very disheveled, she she had no legs, and she didn't have any pants on at the time. And she, after she tried to gather her wits and thoughts, she she claimed that her wheelchair was stolen, and that it had been left there, and she ended up sleeping in our parking lot. Obviously, I was really concerned because of traffic going in and out. We called 911, and 911 did a great job of dispatching both police and fire and ambulance. And when I left this morning, they were in the process of ascertaining whether or not she was all right, and then, as I understand, was later transported to the hospital and then checked out. And then, quite frankly, I'm not sure where she ended up after that. But yeah, it was a little concerning, and that because of the flow of traffic going into the lots and the fact that she was in the lot and appeared to have slept there overnight, and that's all.
Thank you, Ken. Any other new business comments? Is there any old business?
Just a reminder that next week is when I'm you're due to adopt the provisional budget, and you're also scheduled to go over a number of potential resolutions that you would like to submit for consideration at our state convention. Just based on feedback that I've gotten from you so far, and I'm still working on resolutions, but just to give you an idea, I'm working on two resolutions dealing with the alcohol tax. One would at least provide for just a simple redistribution of the tax. Another one would provide for an increase in the sales tax on alcoholic beverages with the some money to go to the counties. And that I've been working on three property tax limitation statute resolutions. One is to go, it's exactly the one that we did last year, which is 3% or the CPI, whichever is greater rather than less, a one-time opportunity to have an adjustment in mill levies, and that to kind of do a reset for counties. And then, one is just an out-and-out repeal. I've been also working on a resolution that would say any fees that are set by the state of South Dakota, with the exception of the recording fees, because we've just dealt with that, but any fees that counties are required to collect that are set by the state, that there be an automatic increase in those as per the CPI. And that in order to keep up with those fees, I mean, as you know, that's about half, little under half of our revenue sources is other fees other than property taxes. And then, working again on one about persons charged with crimes and that in the state penitentiary, to have the state pay for those rather than for the county to pay for the defense of those inmates. Those are the ones I've got prepared so far. There is three, or excuse me. There is three, or excuse me, two more that I'm working on that I'll have for you. One is for counties to share in any increase in sales tax that might be enacted at either the state or the local level, whereby counties should get a share of that revenue because of our responsibilities that we have with that increase. And the other one I've been asked to work on deals with TIFs, and that I'm calculating right now what is the, the amount of dollars that are deferred by the county, or from the county for TIFs. I mean, if, you know, property tax is a big revenue source for us, and it just seems that the legislature's not willing to do anything else for us, and that, and so, if property tax is what we live by, and that we're looking at what the county does lose when we have TIFs that we either have no control over as far as approving, and that, and so, I'm bringing you that information as well for your consideration. So, I don't know if I've missed any, that any of you have come to me, but those are the ones that I've gotten feedback from, from all of you. Those are the resolutions that I'll bring forward next week, and whether they get passed or not, that's up to this, this table. So, we'll have as much supporting documents with each of the resolutions as we can, you know, so that you can make an informed decision.
Commissioner Burr?
Those are the ones we're working on.
Ken, on those TIFs, then, you're trying to figure out what we're missing out on on those TIFs?
Correct.
Great.
Correct.
And on those fees, I know that, you know, fees go years and years without being changed, and suddenly, they have to make a giant change. And I, I remember watching Kermit Staggers in the city council, and they were increasing the fee from 25 to 50 bucks. He said, "How'd you, how'd you come up with that change?" And he said, "Well," they said, "Well, we just picked it." Anyway, the idea of going on an index basis certainly makes more sense than just throwing a dart at the wall.
But if you have any more, please let me know soon, and that, so I can have those ready for you for consideration. But those are the ones we've got, we've worked on to date, so.
Any other questions for Ken?
I'd question, Commissioner Kelly, are you ready to go fight for us out there on these?
Oh, yeah.
And when is that?
Mid-August. The, there's a board meeting on, I tell you, the 14th, you're old, and then I think the 15th is the resolutions committee.
Great.
All right. I guess we're ready for executive session, personnel, and contract for negotiation?
If I'm in a litigation.
And a litigation, briefly.
Personnel, contract, litigation for exec. Second.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.